I'd like to call to order the Decap Board of Education Work Session. This is Monday, January 6th, 2014, 2:00 PM. Present, we have Melvin Johnson, Jim McMahon, David Campbell, Dr. Karen Carter is the desire so of participating telephonically. Mr. John Coleman, Dr. Michael Irwin, Mr. Thad Mayfield, Dr. Marley is walking in the door in just a few seconds, Mr. Marcia Orson. Our superintendent of schools has an emergency in his office right now, so we will proceed with our meeting. The first item that we will need to, item of business, is Dr. Karen Carter is out ill and is, has requested to participate telephonically in the meeting. Board policy requires a vote. At this time, I call for a show of hands, a vote.
Motion.
A motion.
Motion.
Moved by, moved by Mr. McMahon, second by Mr. Orson. Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a question. I just want to make sure that, I know there's, is there not specific state law that addresses this, and I just want to make sure we're in conformity with the requirements of the state law.
There, there's a local law that state law refers to which requires that the, the election of the chair and vice chair occur at the...
No, no, this is...
Telephonic participation.
This is a telephonic...
Oh, oh, sorry. Wrong question.
You're just ready for all sorts of questions.
Under the Open Meetings Act, I believe, you have the copy, there, you are allowed to participate by telephone for medical reasons one time in a year?
We're just asking about the process to approve her participating.
Yeah. Right, no, there isn't, what you're doing is correct according to your policy, voting to allow her to participate by phone is, is okay.
Okay, before I was interrupted, we did get a second from Mr. Orson. Is there any discussion here and none? I call for the vote, all in favor, let me know by show of hands. It's unanimous. If you will, Margaret.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Dr. Carter.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, same to you.
Same to you, Doc Carter.
One more.
One more.
One more.
Pass it to Coleman.
At this time, I call for a motion to adopt the agenda. I request that the Board of Education adopt the January 6th, 2014 work session and business meeting agenda. Moved by Mr. McMahon, second by Dr. Irwin. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there may be one item I want to check with Mr. Ramsey that he may be taking off the agenda.
The administration requests to remove item G1 from the agenda at this time.
Then at, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to remove item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Orson, second by Mr. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Here and none, here and none, that item will be removed from the agenda.
We need a vote.
All in favor, let me know by show of hands. It's unanimous.
Approved.
Thank you. Now, at this time, I call for a motion to adopt the January 6th work session and business meeting agenda as amended. Moved by Mr. McMahon, second by Mr. Orson. Is there any discussion?
Just like to recognize Dr. Morley for her arrival. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Doctor. I call for a vote.
Adopt the agenda?
Adopting the agenda.
Dr. Carter, would you like to vote to adopt the agenda?
I so would.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's unanimous. The agenda has been adopted. The first item on the agenda, as by law, to, to elect the, according to the law, the election of the chair and vice chair for the 2014 calendar year must be nominated and voted on in the first meeting in January. So this meeting, so at the, at this time, I call for nomination for the chair.
Is it appropriate that the vice chair nominate the chair for chair? Dr. Johnson?
Okay, thank you. Yes, that's fourth, I know. Is there another nomination?
No. She said no.
No, no other nomination. At this time, I think it would be appropriate to vote. We still have to vote, although it's one on one nomination. You don't need to vote? Well, thank you, thank you for your faith.
You don't need one nominee.
Okay. Thank you for your confidence. Yes, I did vote for myself.
Ms. Neal?
Election.
You ought to vote on the nomination that's been made.
Okay, the nomination.
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. McMahon, second by Dr. Irwin. Is there any discussion? Here and none, I call for the vote. For the vote in favor of the vice chair. Dr. Carter?
Approved.
Yo, thank you so much. All right, it's unanimous for the, the chair. At this time, I take a nomination for the vice chair. Dr. Marley?
Jim McMahon for the vice chair.
Moved by Dr. Marley, second by Mr. Mayfield. Oh, sorry. Any other nomination?
I would, I'd like to make a motion that Dr. Karen Carter...
Dr. Karen Carter? Any other nominations? Here and, here and none. Since Mr. McMahon's name comes first, we vote, vote, vote on...
Vote on the nominations first and then just proceed your questions.
Yeah.
Did you close your nominations? Are there any others?
Well, we'll close the nominations. Any additional nominations? Here and no additional nominations. At this time, I call for a motion to, to close the, the nominations on the, say, of two names, as Mr. Jim McMahon and Dr. Karen Carter.
So who, who made the motion?
Moved by Mr. Orson, second by Mr. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Here and none, call for the vote. On closing the nomination, not only vote.
And Dr. Carter's texting me her responses.
Okay. Dr. Carter? Did she vote?
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Are you voting on closing the nominations?
I'm sorry, I thought I said yes.
Okay.
Okay. So it's unanimous that we close the vote.
Nominee number one.
Nominee number one, Mr. Jim McMahon. All in favor of Mr. Jim McMahon? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven. Dr. Carter?
Approved.
I mean, are you voting for Mr. McMahon or not? No, or you wouldn't? Okay.
Sure, that's us.
So that's seven.
Is it seven or nine?
You didn't vote, okay.
Okay, and then for Dr. Carter?
So that's eight for Dr. Carter. We won, okay. Welcome, Mr. McMahon. Thank you. At the first meeting of each year, welcome, Mr. Superintendent. At the first meeting of each calendar year, all board members shall publicly swear to or affirm their commitment to comply with the board member's ethics policy as set forth in the board policy BH and the board member conflict of interest policy as set forth in board policy BH. At this time, I would entertain a, a motion to follow through and approve this recommendation. Moved by Mr. McMahon, second by...
So moved.
By Dr. Carter. Is there any discussion? Here and none. All in favor, let me know by show of hands.
Dr. Carter?
Approved.
It passes unanimously. At this time, I would ask each board member if we would complete the Board of Education What each board member has signed, I will read to you the Board of Education Ethics Oath. I, the board member's name, as a member of the Board of the Decap County Board of Education, hereby affirm my commitment to comply with the board member ethics policy as set forth in board policy BH and board member conflict of interest policy as set forth in policy BHA. I want to thank all the board members for participating in this process. At this time, I call for a motion to recess the business meeting. Moved by Dr. Morley, second by Dr. Irwin. Is there any discussion? Here and none. I call for the vote. All in favor, let me know by show of hands. Dr. Carter?
Approved.
It's unanimous. The first item for the review of agenda items for the business meeting, approval of the minutes, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board, move the board approve the minutes as written.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure that each one of you have reviewed the minutes online and, and they are in, in the booklet. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Financial report, Dr. Bell?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bell has completed a tour on the ocean liner celebrating the retirement of his dear wife.
Wonderful.
But he will be present for, really, he will be, I'm sorry, he will be present for the 7:00 PM meeting, and we were kind enough to offer him two more hours of enjoyment before he came back to work. And instead, he is amply represented by two of his most trusted lieutenants. Fair enough. Mr. Bauer, go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Thurman, Dr. Johnson, Mr. McMahon, and members of the board. First, I want to make sure that you all have your copies of your board financial statements that was in your package. And basically, what I wanted to do, first page, is just go over, excuse me, just to briefly go through the first page. I wanted to note that we have on the revenue side that we have collected $454 million compared to $428 million in the prior year. And we are tracking ahead of our anticipation for local revenues, and those local, local revenues consist mainly of property taxes and the title ad valorem tax. The question, and I think the question Dr. Bell has asked in the past, is will this continue? We, we hope so, we're optimistic that it will, but we cannot give a definitive answer on that. On another positive note, and we received $6 million from the Hury Mitchell settlement, and I believe those funds were deposited into our account on December 26th, just as a note. That $6 million is not reflected on these November statements. They should be reflected on the December statements. Okay? I'm sorry, it probably will be, I believe, in local revenues, or there's probably a special line item for settlements. State sources, they are tracking almost to the T, we're about $930,000 off. If you look on page three, you will be able to see that. The bottom small square, you can see the state sources. And they're about $930,000 below our estimates, but we hope to, of course, that will be made up in excess local funds, local revenue. In April, we are hoping that we will have a slight increase in these state revenues, and we will know more about that when our March FTE counts come in. And overall, that's all I have on the revenue side. The revenues are looking okay at this point. On the expenditure side, back on page one, we are looking at $252 million versus $255 million in the prior year. We do have some concerns, three areas of concerns, workers' comp, transportation salaries, and legal fees. In February, we plan to have a mid-year adjustment in which our revenue anticipations and expenditure appropriations may be adjusted. And for the board financials, that's really all I have unless there are questions, which I'll be happy to try and answer.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Mr. McMahon?
I'll defer to Mr. Mayfield and Mr. Coleman.
Oh, I was just...
So I was hoping we could just get a little more, had a couple of questions. The first would be just getting a little more detail on the nature of the cost overruns and, in workers' compensation, transportation salaries, and legal fees. And with respect to the first two, I think with legal fees, we're relatively familiar with that as a group, but with respect to the first two, if we have an idea of the causation for that and how we'd expect to remediate that when we restate the budget?
The transportation fees, the salaries for transportation, I believe they were just, they were underbudgeted.
Do we have a sense for why they would be underbudgeted?
Historical reasons, they have been in the past, and the budgeting process just has not caught up to that.
What, do you know what the cost overrun is projected to be in those areas now?
I do not know currently, but I can, I can find that out for you.
And with workers' comp, do we have a sense for, you know, I know we're at 98% I think of the budget now, and so it looks like we're basically running double.
Workers' comp, Mr. Thurman, would you like to address that?
I want to say again, Mr. Dr. Bell will be here at 7:00, and he can provide a more detailed response to some of the questions. He was just sitting here today, but generally, particularly as it relates to workers' comp, we terminated the services of one of the providers, and after their termination, they submitted a substantially high number of bills that they had been hiding that apparently the district was not aware of. I know, Mr. Ramsey, is that fair, Mr. Ramsey? You might want to speak to that in our effort to clean it up, and you go ahead and explain what happened.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. That is correct, though. We did terminate the vendor last year. We're getting very good reports on the efficiency. We have had a lapse of leadership in that area for quite some time, was able to hire someone about two and a half months ago, and, and we were able to dig in, and once the termination was completed, a lot of the old bill review billings came into us that we were unaware of. So that contributes to some of the cost overruns, as well as the district has been settling some stale workers' compensation cases that in the past the district had not settled, but we, we thought it was more prudent to begin to settle some of those cases because otherwise the district may pay three or four times the amount in the long run if we don't settle those in the short term. But we, but we do have a plan in place to remediate and, and reduce those expenditures going forward. In addition to the fact that it appears that there's an extreme cost overrun, we actually, and, and we're having, having that worked up by the finance department now to show the board that we were able to, we actually cut a lot from that workers' compensation budget last year in anticipation of having some procedures in place this year, but because of the, the change in the board and, and leadership, we were just not able to effect some of those policies in a timely manner. So, but we are putting those in place now, and the board should have sufficient, a sufficient amount of cost savings going forward.
And a quick follow-up on that, I mean, it sounds like, if I understood you correctly, and let me know if that's right, that we front-loaded a, a lot of costs to basically clear house on some of the workers' compensation claims. So is it fair to say that you would expect the cost run at a lower rate in the second half of the year than in the first half? So we're 98% of budget now, you wouldn't expect us to double the budget amount, you'd expect that to be a slower rate of growth?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
If I may, Mr. Chair, Ms. Alexander Hill, we had several meetings, and she presented me with a detailed inventory of outstanding workers' comp cases that had been on the books, with a large number of outstanding cases. And to her credit, I asked her and her staff to move expeditiously to resolve many of the claims, they were relatively small, and I do believe, Mr. Coleman, that you, we will see savings or reduction in costs going forward, but it, when you're cleaning up, it's, it's just there. You don't really know what's in the closet till you go in and start cleaning up. And by the provider, now that's the thing that really surprised me the most, that these primarily medical costs that they had been withholding, that previous administrations were not aware that the costs were out there, they had not been paid. And so after we terminated the provider, they then forwarded thousands of dollars in bills that we didn't know existed.
Tens of thousands of dollars in bills.
And then my final question would just be on the revenue side. I was just looking at a couple of the revenue buckets, and these are smaller than the major sources we addressed, but I wanted to get a sense for if there might be timing issues at play here, or how we, how we think about timing there. It looks like relative to last year, revenues for beverage taxes and other sources under, other state sources are coming in slower than they did last year. Do we have a sense for whether that's a timing issue, or whether that actually is running under what we expected this year?
The beverage tax, we, we believe that's just a timing difference, but it's really difficult to say at this given time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayfield?
Yeah, I just wanted to, this just sort of came up as following the discussion regarding workers' comp. I guess my two questions would be, one, when we are evaluating on an annual basis the trend of expenses, is this an anomaly? I mean, that, that, that this particular, so this, these dollars that, that were added were something that never occurs typically? Is that?
Well, I can't speak to it historically. It's, in the past, and I know Mr. Ramsey can speak to this, we've never taken the posture that number one, we had too many open cases, and that we could be more aggressive in expediting and resolving the issues so that going forward, because I felt like by maintaining the open case, it was actually costing us more than selling them.
Right, right.
Having been involved in representation in workers' comp over the years, it just didn't quite mesh with my historical understanding as to what we were doing and how we were doing it and the costs associated with it.
Yeah, and that's kind of where the, sort of the genesis of my question comes from, whether or not, maybe it's understated from my point of view, and that is whether or not we have the management protocol in place to evaluate those costs as a matter of routine so that we either see low numbers coming in, so that we can either anticipate when those kinds of things happen or to prevent them, quite honestly.
We, we do have that in place now, Mr. Mayfield, and you will see those numbers improve.
To your question, historically, no.
Dr. Marley?
I, I think a lot of it is being expeditions and being on top of what's going on when those cases come in, and not allowing them to lie. So we're talking about from the past, my understanding that where we are now, we're looking at that, and there's some stopgaps put in place in order to be able to rectify those situations where they come about, instead of allowing them, them to just sit around and waiting for something to happen that you don't know what's going to happen. Is that right, Mr. Superintendent?
Well, yes, and it, and I, I don't know all of the history, it's just what I've been able to divine and discern over since my brief tenure here. Bottom line is that we will do a better job than what we've done in the past in managing this particular activity as it relates to the school district. That's not being critical to anyone, as I say, ultimately, the buck's always stopped at the superintendacy, right? No way else.
Correct.
And then it's incumbent upon me to do a better job than what we've done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Dr. Carter, your, your mic light is on, does that mean that you have a question? I don't.
I think, I think Mr. Mayfield is using his mic and mine.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Carter. Any additional question? Okay. No further questions? Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda unless you have some questions, Mr.?
No, my only comment was that, that I appreciate Michael Thurman's leadership in saying, accepting the fact that the buck does stop there. But I do want to just say for the legal entity of the school district, obviously, is the board. And with legal, it does actually stop with the board. So, that's our, we're charged as the board from that aspect. So, that's my only comment, but yeah, I'm good with financials. Thank you, everybody, for the hard work.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Approval of the human resources report?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Dr. Johnson, members of the board, and Mr. Thurman. Division of Human Resources report for January 2014 provides you with the number of new contracted employees, the number of new non-contracted employees, the number of resignations and terminations. In addition to that, I have provided for you a monthly update relative to our vacancy report, along with resignations and a comparison to other districts. Please note that we are strategically and aggressively continuing to hire personnel. Currently, we have, I believe, 22 early childhood or elementary vacancies. Please note that the district held a student-teacher job fair on December 17, 2013, and from there, we had about 65 participants. It is anticipated within the next five to seven days, as documents are received, that a large number, close to all of the elementary vacancies, will be removed. In addition to the Spanish vacancies that you see there, we are in contact with the Latin American Association that is up off of Beaufort Highway, and we are providing some type of collaboration to see if we can assist with getting permits and assist those individuals with becoming educators to meet the needs of the district. As I stated, in addition to that, we are aggressively, once again, attacking all vacancies to ensure that there is a high-quality, highly-qualified teacher in front of all students. This concludes the Division of Human Resources report for January 2014.
Thank you for your report. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dorson?
Dr. Ward Smith. Just a quick question, because I know we're all concerned about kind of this sort of stubbornly relatively high vacancy rate compared to other systems. I mean, the only other system in same situation as Gwinnett, and they're much larger to us. And I know there's no, every month is different, I get all that, but, and, and I appreciate that we're reaching out, for example, to the Latin American Association, but can you just give me sort of a, give us a glimpse of sort of your, maybe your six-month plan, or maybe come back to us next month, to try to avoid this situation, you know, going forward?
Yes, sir.
Because I find that every year, we're at the high end of the vacancy rate.
Yes, sir, and certainly, thank you once again for that question. Certainly, my goal and my role in this district is to ensure that we have high-quality teachers in front of all students. However, as I stated from the beginning, retention is something that we all own. As a part of the strategic planning process, one of our initiatives is the retention of high-quality teachers, because as I pulled, the number of educators who have left the district since November 1, 2013, because I as well stated, look at the numbers each month. Please note that these numbers are not the same individuals. We're filling them, but then others come. I actually analyzed what were some of the reasons as to why teachers were leaving or did leave from November until this time. And what I received was essentially another position, there were two, but the majority of them, retirement. There were a few personal illnesses, as well as leaving the profession for teaching responsibilities or other entities. Please note, we aggressively continue to recruit, but until our salary structure, as well as other things, are in place, then it may be somewhat difficult for educators to see the benefit of remaining in DAB. As we work to improve our structure and to retain educators, certainly, you know, these numbers will come down. But for now, yes, you are correct. There are challenges with regard to retaining, and that is the reason for the vacancies, retention.
So, my follow-up to that would be, because I think this comparison to other districts is, is helpful, just to give us an idea where we stand, that it would also be helpful to maybe get a better understanding of what the reasons for their vacancies are, right? So, all we know right now, we're looking at a number-to-number comparison, but we don't know if we have an apples-to-apples comparison.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dorson. And I did contact the state in order to obtain that information, because reason code in DAB may not be the same reason code in Gwinnett. For instance, our reason codes for DAB, we have currently about 25 different codes as to why a person can select. Other districts may only have five. Some districts may have seven. So, the difficulty in terms of crosswalking that information is somewhat, you know, it, it's not apples-to-apples.
Would there be some sense, again, I know this is not a single-day project, of getting together with your colleagues in the other, other districts to develop a database of information that was consistent across systems? I think this is, we've had this discussion in other contexts, like with substitutes, because I think, you know, we're all in the same market. And so, to the extent, nobody's at fault for having different reason codes, but maybe it would be helpful if we all agreed on having reason codes, because it would be helpful, for example, if we're looking at candidates from other districts, that if there's some consistency in the information database, it may be useful to every system at some point. And so, I, I would encourage you to perhaps get together with your colleagues in the other districts and find if we can create some common understanding around this data.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Marley?
And, Mr. Dorson, most certainly, that's taken very well, but I think that we have to be careful. We have to begin to look at what is going on in DAB. We have to begin to look at the other districts, there are so, so many differences, as you said. There may be five items in one county as to why the people are leaving, and we have 25. So, we have to begin to look at what are we doing and what are we not doing? And when we look at retention, well, retention is an issue anytime you're dealing with people. Anywhere in any organization that's dealing with people, you're going to have retention issues. You're going to have retention things that are going on. When you look at retirement, retirement is an ongoing situation. That's not something that you can control. And so, I think that we have to be careful that we're not belaboring and utilizing our staff and our administration to continuously looking at what's going on elsewhere, but looking at what's going on at home. What are we doing? What are we not doing? What can we do better in order to improve what's taking place here? And be well-recognized, Mr. Dorson, that as an educator, most educators do know what's going on in other systems. So, when there are vacancies in one, they're going to know that there's a vacancy in another, and that's because of the fact that they're looking at going other places. But we have to also begin to look at what are we paying people to be on the front line of working with our children? What are we paying people to say that they're appreciative? What are we paying people to say that all your education is really counting? So, I think at some point, again, as I said before, it's a mindset, and until our nation, until our localities change their mindsets about education, you're going to have vacancies. There are going to be people who are just going to leave, and some are going to look at opportunities elsewhere, or they're leaving education altogether. So, I think that we would be best served if we spend our time looking at what's happening in DAB, what are people saying, why are we not doing, or what can we do? And we might really be doing it, but can we control when people want to leave? And so, I would like to not see us just taking, waste a lot of time looking at everybody else, because when you're looking at a smaller system compared to DAB, who has gotten a lot from the Atlanta city when the projects were closed down, and we look at the different languages, that doesn't compare to most districts around. So, I think that we would be better served just sometimes just looking at what's going on in our own house, and stop trying to fix and look at what's going on in everybody else's house.
No further questions? Any, is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Action on the International Community School Renewal Charter Petition?
Good afternoon, Dr. Johnson, members of the board, and Mr. Thurmond. We are asking action on the renewal of this petitioner. The International Community School has been doing business within DAB County for 11 years, and they're coming up for their next renewal, which would grant them another five years. They serve a population of students that come from 40 countries, speaking 25 different languages. They're accessing anyone who is interested in coming to their school, and they have been very effective in recruiting a very diverse student population, both refugees and non-refugee students. They have had, even with our financial situation in the country, they have had very extensive support outside of the district that has provided them with a tremendous amount of funds for capital campaigns and additional funds that were donated to their school, and they have been successful in doing so. As a matter of fact, we really contribute about $3 million a year to this school, but they're operating on a budget of $4 million, because the rest of it comes either from grants or foundation funds. They also offer very unique opportunities to the students who attend there. They have a school within the school that we observed, which is totally run by volunteers that offer their time and their energy on a weekly basis to the students in the school. They run a pretty expensive reading recovery program, which serves students, four students each semester, who are non-readers in first grade. They have a pretty extensive fine arts program that includes drama and dance. They also have a pretty extensive music and music technology, as well as theater. They are able to keep their student-teacher ratios at a 12-to-1 ratio, which is phenomenal. When we walked into the classrooms of this school, there were at least two teachers in every classroom, and sometimes that included four adults in some other classrooms. They are, they offer breakfast and lunch outside of our system. They have contracted with Preferred Food Services. They will continue to contract with our transportation services, and their open enrollment starts in, started in December and will continue as part of one of our choice schools. And at this time, I will entertain any questions that the board members may have.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, thank you for that, and also thank you for the, the packet of information we got on the school. I thought it was very extensive. As an open question, do we have representatives of the school here by any chance?
We do.
Okay, great. Look, the biggest thing that popped out at me, there were two things that popped out at me reading the recommendation. One was first, a packet containing the CRCT scores, and obviously, you know, one of the things that we have as a metric to track the performance of schools are things like graduation rates, which aren't relevant here, but also test scores. A thing that made me a little bit concerned was when I look at the third and fourth-grade test scores almost across the board, they're either competitive with or better than the rest of DAB, and I, I think, you know, it's hard to generalize, because we have to go through each subject, but that's generally true, I think, in English. It was generally true in language arts. It was generally true in math, though not every year. But when we get to fifth grade, a concern I had was, A, that the scores at the International Community School seem to lag DAB and the state of Georgia, and B, that there doesn't seem to be a trend of improvement over time. So, whereas I can look, you know, at the CRCT reading scores 2009 to 2000, or I'm sorry, at the reading scores for fourth graders from 2010 to 2013, there's a trend of improvement. If I look at fifth graders, that's generally not true, and that tends to be true across subjects. Could you talk to me, or have a representative from the school, whomever is appropriate to answer this question, about why the fifth-grade scores would substantially differ from the fourth and third grade? Intuitively, that makes me nervous, because it seems like the students' performance is decreasing over time. And then, B, given those lag DAB and don't have a trend of improvement, what's the remediation plan for that? How do we plan to address those lagging scores in the latter grades?
That's a great question, Mr. Coleman, and we did notice their strengths as well, because they have really outperformed the state and the district in so many of the other areas. One of the things that they shared with us is that students, first of all, let me backtrack a little bit with ICS, they actually attempted to go to sixth grade. That did not bode well for them, because they were in a totally different facility. They were actually running two facilities simultaneously. Now that they're at medlock, there's a possibility that they may consider expansion in the coming years, but there's still uncertainty on that. What happens with their students is they leave at a certain point, either between third or fourth grade, to get into another charter school that offers a little bit more continuity into the middle school, such as the museum school. And so, what happens when you do that, and a student leaves, and you've been working with them for two or three years, is then you have a huge gap of new students that are coming in, not knowing the language, more set of issues with those students to be able to educate them at the onset in fifth grade. And so, that's attributed to that. Part of what we look for is, does the school have a sense of how they're going to address that? Well, there are several factors that are happening right now. The school has just transitioned three principals, actually. One that, who had been there for a long-term, retired at the end of September, and we had an interim principal in that school, and that person has gone to another setting. And so, we have another one who just came in, starting today, actually, but she had already transitioned beginning in December. So, that brings a fresh leadership looking at data. That's what they've been doing all day today at that school. When I spoke with her, she said one of the big things that they want to address is by creating tutorial twice a week, in addition to the current tutorials that are happening in the school, as well as beginning to compact math and science for fifth-grade students, because that will increase the amount of curriculum that is being offered to them, which should hopefully bring them up to speed to performance with their peers.
And I guess my, my request on that front is, you know, should, should the board approve? I would find it very interesting on an interim basis, just to check in again on, on test scores over the next year or two, as we can, on an interim basis, because I do, I do want to make sure that, you know, the plan that's in place is leading to success, especially for those latter-grade students. And I know there are unique challenges for that particular student population, but that was one thing that jumped at me. The second quick question was with relation to the budget. I could have been reading this wrong, so I just want you to walk me through this. It looked like the school, and this is a good problem to have, was carrying a relatively large cash balance on its balance sheet right now. That is a substantially better issue to have than carrying a negative cash balance, or than running deficit. So, I applaud the school for its, for its very conservative use of resources. I do want to make sure that, A, I understand the cash balance, and B, I understand what the plans to use that are, or what the school thinks is an appropriate balance to carry, because you can get into the problem on the other side, that if your balance is too large, it either means you're not expending resources on the right things, or there can be, you know, potential problems, not that anyone in the school would ever do this, with misappropriation of resources if the balances become too large. So, could you just talk me through what those cash balances are, and why they've been accumulated, and what the school plans to do with them?
Absolutely, and I don't have the budget in front of me, but if I remember correctly, I think their cash balance right now is about $288,000. $200,000 of those dollars, it's coming directly from their capital campaign that just ended this year, which they were very successful. And I am glad that you recognize that it's better to end the year on a positive note than a negative note. And I believe that a question that was asked by the board member was, is there too much cash? I, we feel that having reserves is a very smart move on the part of ICS. They have also been very strategic in cutting back when they needed to cut back. For example, during the financial crisis, they actually had two reading recovery teachers. That's a pretty huge amount of expenditures for a program that reaches eight kids per year, per person, and they scaled back to one. So, their expenditure as it moves forward is they're thinking of, again, bringing back some of those very same structures that really helped them get in the performance, to get to the performance that they are achieving right now. If you look at the projected balance over the next five years, it should be a little bit over $2 million in cash reserves. That is based on multiple things. One is, in the past, fundraising for them on a yearly basis has yielded about $500,000. They're being very wise in going on the lower end of that, and assuming that if their fundraising holds true to the past few years, that they'll at least be able to bring in $200,000 a year, and with their budgeting, and still being able to offer a pretty comprehensive program to their students, they should be able to get that up to $2 million.
And I think you're addressing my question. I think the bigger concern for me was the $2 million cash balance projected at the end, which would be about 50% of the operating budget of the school. But understanding that that's really an offset, because the school is raising so much outside funding, if I'm hearing you correctly, that can also be a buffer against any poor fundraising years, or any years in which grants don't come through. So, again, it's a unique situation where a larger cash balance might be warranted, given that.
That is correct.
Okay.
My questions probably have more to do with the flip side of that equation, and that is whether or not we share any learnings that we get from, well, certainly ICS in this, in this case, where they have better performance, I noticed that, than, than the state, and certainly in DAB, and of course, the state is actually doing better than DAB. And so, it would, it just puzzled me that if you've got 47% of the students, which they indicate, are new to the American culture, and no school, or prior experience in schooling, if 47% of those students come from that environment, what would... what would explain them performing much better than DeKalb?
Mr. McPhie, that is a great question. And that, I'm going to address that by our recent visit to ICS. We were quite impressed with how driven the staff is at that particular school. We actually, upon our visit, we even said that we would like to involve them in talking with our leadership academies to share how they're engaging the community in being actively involved in that school. Because it's not only just the parents and the families that they're bringing in. They have tremendous partnerships with universities. We saw about close to 20 students when we were there from, oh goodness, now I want to, thank you, Georgia State. I was thinking of Florida State, sorry for that. You know what's on my mind.
Tonight, yeah.
And, and they were there, serving their students, even though they were already on winter break, which was phenomenal. People would crush you in the hallway. They wouldn't even look up, look up to you. They were like driving down the hallway to get their next student so they could tutor them. And so we asked them to share that at our leadership academies because we think that there's something that they're doing. Now, granted, they give that effort to one lady who's able to kind of get anyone who's retired in the community and come and help in the school. But clearly, there's a very clear path of what, where, what they're doing there, why they're doing it, and the support that they're wanting to give to their students. And we hope that we can share that and learn from each other, which is, it is one of our schools in DeKalb. And they're getting tremendous success.
Thank you. Mr. Orson.
I wanted to start out by saying, I've had the privilege of being familiar with the school for quite a number of years. And it's really astounding the work they've done, particularly their willingness to address the needs of the community that has been woefully underserved, I mean, even with the best of intentions. I mean, we as a county probably do a better job than other systems. But the International Community School, and knowing their roots back out in Avondale, and then being spread out between two buildings, and Stone Mountain, and having to overcome really a fair amount of adversity, not just of their student population, but of what faced, is faced by any startup charter school. And in their case, probably at a time when the environment to charter schools was not as favorable as it has been in more recent years. And I, I appreciate my colleagues' observations about certain subgroups. And I think that's one of the challenges we're always going to have in evaluating the success, even of our own schools, is that, you know, it's, we'd love it, always will be a straight line and an upward direction, so we're showing constant improvement. And I think the real challenge is us, for us to evaluate those things that are off the grid in a way that don't look as favorable. And so there is actually a question behind here. I know one of the, I think, challenges, as you pointed out, Dr. Boza, is that there is a little bit of a drop-off in a replacement factor of people, particularly in the fifth grade, if they're looking for alternatives, particularly in the middle school. And, and I know that some of the students from ICS matriculate to Druid Hills Middle School. Geographically, it's aligned, but the attendance zone of the International Community School is county-wide, so it's not in complete alignment. So one of the questions I would have, and it may not be answerable today, so it may be something for us to look at long-term. Would it make sense for ICS, and I, and I don't want to presuppose a question for Ms. Hale, in terms, as the board chair, but would it make sense for us to formally align ICS with Druid Hills Middle School, in part because they are both IB schools? So one of the consistent factors there would allow that continuity. And I think, again, I know it's a broader question than the approval or disapproval of the charter extension. But I think it is one of the things perhaps we need to be thinking about because I think, again, we tend to be locked in sort of rigid structures. It really goes to this school if you're from this place. This is school, well, you go, but you go on to the next school based on what your attendance zone is, and not what the best educational pathway is. And I just want to get your thoughts on this because this may be a way to address some of these issues that you have observed, and may also be part of what we should be thinking about how we align our schools anyway. So, Dr. Boza, I would start with you.
Mr. Orson, I think that that is one area certainly that we can look into and review to see whether it would be allowable within the charter school law that we presently have, and whether it would make sense for the students that were attending that building to be able to continue. And I want to thank you for mentioning, I, I believe that I may have not mentioned that ICS was the first school in DeKalb to offer international baccalaureate program. And so actually, they were the trendsetters, and we followed suit by introducing it into many of our schools. So thank you for recognizing that as well.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Morley.
Yes, I, I wanted to say thank you almost certainly for the data, and also for the work that you all are doing. And it would be really, really a utopia if we had all classes with 12-to-1, 12 teachers to one, 12 students to one teacher. So we have to begin to look at all of that. We also have to recognize that the charter school is DeKalb. It's a part of DeKalb County. So we can't be able to try to compare, to compare yourself to yourself. So I think we have to be mindful of that. The other thing is recognizing that when we look at what's taking place, how can we begin to look at what's going white and looking at the glass as half-full instead of constantly looking at it as half-empty? And looking at what's really being done and being able to move forward? Because we most certainly have to be able to make sure that we can afford some opportunities to these students coming in. On the other side, too, when we begin to look at it, when you look at the data, you have a smaller percentage of students being compared to 100,000. But even then, still, that small percentage is included in the 100,000 that you're comparing it to. So we have to be very careful when we begin to look at the data that is here and making sure that it's applicable to what it's supposed to be applicable to, and what do we need to do in order to make sure that fifth grade level, Mr. Coleman, most certainly, is, is important. I looked at that also. But I think that, as you were saying, Doctor, is that we have to be mindful of the fact that most of these students have been other places, and we're trying to come in. It's harder to intervene than it is to prevent. And so when you're trying to do intervention methods in order to correct something that has not been there, it's going to be very, very difficult. So we have to be aware of what are the other variables? And I think when we begin to look at data more and more, that there are other variables. Are we controlling any of these variables to make sure of what's going on? Most often, we can't. What about the home situation? What about the community? All those things come to play. But I think it still comes down to, how do we move from where we are to get to where we want to be? Are we actually addressing these issues when we begin to look at the strategic plan? Are we actually looking at what are we going to do in order, in order to increase the student achievement and graduation rate? Being the only one who has international graduation and all those things like that, I say that we are far ahead of the game. But at the same time, I still say that we have to be careful that we don't begin to look at and say, well, we're doing better than DeKalb, when they are a part of DeKalb.
Dr. Carter, you.
I'm here.
I just wanted to make sure we acknowledge you. No further, no further discussion. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda for tonight? Here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda item, uh, consent agenda for this evening. Approval of Southern Behavior Group?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Johnson, members of the board, Mr. Thurman. Good afternoon and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Item five is seeking permission to continue a relationship with Southern Behavior Group, known as SBG, from January 7th, 2014 through June 30th, 2014. SBG provides IEP services to students with disabilities, including students on the autism spectrum. And specifically, the item is requesting that the DeKalb Board of Education approve the contract between DeKalb County School District and Southern Behavioral Group, the most responsive and responsible bidder, in the amount of $500,000.
Is there any discussion? Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Howell, the, running the numbers on this and looking at the information in the packet, there was only five or six persons, people that are actually going to serve with DeKalb through Southern Behavioral. I thought we had an approved list of some.
Are you talking about who they provide?
Yeah.
Provide the services, the.
This is actually a financial question, by the way.
And I think I know where you're going. If you, we adjusted the contract to be within this fiscal year.
Right.
So are you asking about the not to exceed $500,000?
That's a lot.
Being on the high end, it is.
Right. What do you expect in reality?
Well, in reality, if you look at the contract, when it talks about $54, or $150 per hour.
Right.
Estimating 60 hours per month.
Nine grand a month.
And that we would do a written if, to exceed that. So we could say, that math comes to about $54,000.
Right.
It'll be above that in that it won't just be an hourly for the IEPs. We're contracting for any services that we might need. Just so other board members know, who aren't in pre-agenda setting, we changed the contract to stay within this fiscal year. But our original fine dollar not to exceed was based on a year and a half's worth of work. So it really, you know, if it makes folks more comfortable, we could lower that number noted because we intend to come back for the new fiscal year because we will anticipate needing these services for FY.
My request, if it's, if you think you can work this out with the superintendent's direction.
Right. I would defer to Lawrence for those others. My math gives me $54,000 for the monthly, but for other legal.
Right. These folks provide services that typically professionals known as BCBA's provide, board-certified behavior analysts. The market for BCBA's is very tight. And we've had, I think the district has tried to locate, they used to have a couple, but I think with various reasons, they, at least one, if not both, have, have left. And so these, this particular organization helps serve oftentimes sort of the really, really disabled children that need the most help. And so they provide services that are very unique. And so I know, as, as Dr. Howell's mentioning, there are sort of the general services they provide, so-and-so. But then there's also a particular case or two where a child is severely disabled. And, and we have used this company to help provide the services that we really can't provide in-house.
I'm okay with the warranted services. My financial question.
Yeah, what I don't know, I don't know the answer is to how, how much.
Right, so my suggestion or request is if we're essentially saying 54 grand, right, for the, nine a month for six months, 54, and then add an additional, whatever you, 30 grand, for, you know, for, are we asking for 100, 150 grand, just 200 grand? But a half a million, I think, is just, so if we can get that half million number down to a more reasonable number, is that fair?
I'm comfortable with that, Lawrence, because we know.
I'm, I'm okay with approving it, and if you can just come back next month with a finite number, that is more reasonable.
Give it to Dr. Bell, too, to have him involved. I don't think that's a problem, Mr. McMahon.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We'll verify the math with SBG, and we'll look at our caseload. And we'll come back with that.
Thank you so much.
Mr., Dr. Irwin.
How you doing, Dr. Howell? I just have a quick question for you. Will our new Tappashee Charter School be able to buy into this program if they wanted to?
Right, right. During this, for this particular contract in the future.
Yeah.
That is a question that I need to confer with Dr. Bell and Dr. Boza as we're working through what above and beyond services that the district provides is also extended to charter schools, above and beyond their pupil. And that's something, Dr. Boza, that we would have to, I'd have to confer with them together. Dr. Irwin, I would say that those students have IEPs, and then they would, you know, they're bound by law to provide the services identified in the IEP. Now, whether or not the BCBA's that are provided through Southern Behavior is extended to them or not, that's what I need to check.
Can we, can we vote on this next month? Is that appro, or do we need it this month?
Is there something?
We need to, yeah, and I'm comfortable because we can always come back. But in order for this month, as Mr. Warco had mentioned, we had two full-time BCBA's, and we only have one, and so they are picking up.
Right.
So even if we said not to exceed 100,000, and we can come back with a, or even if you approve the 54,000.
So, yeah, I'm good. So let's just amend it to say 100, and if you come back more, warrant needed more, so.
We'll, we'll, so I'll restate the amended request.
Yeah, we'll spend the question.
We will finish the, the questions or the discussion, and then I'm going to ask you to reread the, the requested action, okay?
Any further discussion?
Here and none, now I ask you to reread the action item.
Certainly. It is requested that the DeKalb County Board of Education approve the contract between DeKalb County School District and Southern Behavioral Group, the most responsive and responsible bidder in the amount of $100,000. Thanks.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Here and none, is there any opposition to placing this on the consent agenda as amended? Okay, here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Howell.
Holland Opus Grant acceptance for Sequoia Middle School and Clarkston High School.
Thank you. Item six, per board policy, DFK, requires approval, board approval of all donations over $5,000. And so this item is requesting that the Board of Education accept the donation of musical instruments for Sequoia Middle School from the Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Coleman.
I just think it's worth noting, it sounds like to me in the proposal that Ms. Colleen McHugh and Mr. Anthony Hunt were the ones who submitted the grant request, is that right? So we should just note that, and I think that's a wonderful thing that they were able to, to get the grant, and they did the work to do that, so.
Yes, and Sequoia, as well as one of our other schools, we have had prior recipients, but they are also, will be recognized this evening. So the band director and the principal will be present. Got word, due to the weather, that the students won't be joining them this evening. But thank you for pointing that out.
Any further, Mr. McMahon, you had your item. Any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here and none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Bid number 14-20RI, purchase of sanitation services and materials. Oh, Laura Ridge, I'm sorry. Yeah, Laura Ridge, I'm sorry.
Dr. Johnson, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, I have that item.
This request is for the Lower Ridge Elementary School, who's requesting approval to install a new playground at the school in partnership with Kaboom, which is a nonprofit organization that promotes playtime. So the requested action is that the Board of Education accept an $8,500 donation from the Lower Ridge Elementary School PTA. Per board policy, DFK gives and bequests guidelines to support the design, construction, and support services provided by Kaboom for the installation of a new playground at Lower Ridge Elementary School. The cost for this project will not exceed the donation amount to be accepted from the Lower Ridge Elementary School PTA. And as always, our office will monitor the construction of that project to meet, make sure that it meets all guidelines in the district. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Is there any discussion? Here and none, is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Bid number 14-20RI, purchase of sanitation services and materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The requested action is that the Board of Education approve the award of bid number 14-20R1 sanitation services and materials to Portion Pack Chemical Corporation in the amount not to exceed $130,000. Portion Pack Chemical Corporation is located at 400 North Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60622. And what this will do for us is that this particular corporation will provide kitchen services and materials for us, as well as the training of those materials. So again, Mr. Chairman, if you have questions.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. District-wide armored car and ancillary services.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular request, we're asking for the board's approval of bid number 14-185, district-wide armored car and ancillary services to Dunbar Armored Incorporated, in the amount of $247,000. These services will begin January 7, 2014. The initial contract duration shall be through June 2014, and the contract contains four one-year extension options, subject to your approval or questions, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Here and none, is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? There is none. This item will be placed on the consent agenda. 21st Century Classroom Technology.
Dr. Johnson, member of the board, and Mr. Thurman, good afternoon. The first item is a 21st Century technology item, classroom item that I have today. In your packet, you'll find the executive summary consisting of approximate boards needed in each school. You'll also find quotes on two possible solutions, with the traditional classroom quote being the option, after some consideration and talking to specialists, for the mobile classroom, mobile classrooms, which are trailers. The DeKalb County School District currently has 6,158 classrooms. During the SPOSS III initiative and project, the DeKalb County School District outfitted approximately 4,219 classrooms with Promethean interactive boards, which was considered to be Phase One of the 21st Century Classroom Interactive Project. The district will now begin, pending approval, the process of completing Phase Two of the 21st Century Interactive Board Project, pending board approval. The district currently has approximately 1,939 classrooms and an additional 305 trailers that need to be completed during Phase Two. One of the reasons why we decided to go to state contract with this bid is because we actually secured lesser, in amount of costs regarding the boards by taking this to state contract than we did with actually sending it out for RFP. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approve CDWG to provide interactive board solution services, optional components, and accessories that are cost not to exceed 9 million. The purchases being made via the Georgia Contract Number 99999 SPD, SPD 0000048-0018.
Is there any discussion, Mr. Coleman?
All right. Just a couple of questions about this, from the RFP process specifically. Obviously, this is a reasonably large contract amount, and so I imagine it was a competitive bid process. Could you talk about the comparison between this particular contract and some of the other key contracts that you evaluated, or key proposals you evaluated in the RFP process, particularly with relation, a couple of firms have obviously come up in the debate about this. Could you just talk to those different providers, and why this provider was superior?
Well, sure. Good question, Mr. Coleman. Actually, we had, this is, we went out for RFP three times. And so after looking at everything, we actually were able to go through, there wasn't really that much of a difference in providers, quite honestly. And there are some key things that you, that I can bring to your attention, one of which is, we felt that, and my staff, most importantly, felt that the Promethean board was a slightly better board than the other two competitors. And actually, in putting it out three times, we only had two boards that we, that were submitted each time. One was Promethean, and one was Panasonic. Currently, right now, the district has over 60-plus percent of their boards on a Promethean system, along with the software package, which is just as important. When you go through and you look, the main difference we saw, which was on the short throw projector, which is what we want, is the price. And so going with a Promethean board, we don't have to pay the licenses for that board. If we go with a Panasonic board, which you have to pay, actually, the quote was $499 per board, whereas going with the Promethean board, we actually got the license for free. And so that's what made it, the cost better. Actually, the cost was lower during the RFP. We thought that that was the lowest we could get it, but actually, when we went to state contract, they actually beat out both of the prices that were on the actual RFP. And so we felt safe with that, with that being a state-approved vendor. And also, you know, we've done work over the years with the reseller as well, so we felt comfortable with that as well. But there really wasn't much of a difference. Also, the relocation services for the state contract, they actually met everything that we asked for on the RFP, including the relocation services, which is really important. Because as we move a particular item from a trailer or from a different school, the relocation services were $273 versus on the high end for the relocation services for the other was $424. So there was a drastic difference in that as well.
And could you talk to, you mentioned that you went to RFP three on three separate occasions for this. Would you just explain to us what that process was, and why you had to go back out two more times after the initial RFP?
Well, the process is, you know, the first time we went out, we only received one bid. And with an item this large, we felt that that was a problem. The second, the second time we went out, we received two bids, but we had some issues regarding the way things had went out from a purchasing standpoint, so we decided to rebid it again. And so we rebid it again. We checked into the state contract piece to see if we could get a cheaper deal. And so rather than move forward with the third RFP, we actually took some time, assessed the state contract, and saw that we could get a cheaper price. And so that's when we pulled back, talked with purchasing and our legal division to see if that was applicable, and it was. And so that's when we decided to move forward.
Mr. Mayfield?
Yeah, and my question, I think you answered it at the end. My question was really more of a process, because of this letter that we got from, I guess this EDCO. I was curious as to whether or not we vetted our process, if you will, to make sure that we did what we said we would do through our policies.
Yes, yes, sir. We vetted our process, and, you know, and speaking with Mr. Ramsey and the counsel that he suggested, and also with our purchasing department, we actually felt that we were in compliance. And that's pretty much it.
No further questions?
We have additional?
Yeah.
Mr. McNair?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Brantley, on this, who does the installation of these boards?
The installation is done by a company called E-Bright.
E-Bright?
Yes.
And that is the difference between the purchase amount, and it wasn't in our packet, what the installation costs were?
Well, the installation cost is included in the actual quote. So if you look at your packet right here, they don't, they don't always define it out in the quote, but if you look at the actual quote that's listed for $2,892, if you look at where it says $747, that's included on there, that makes up the whole $2,892, that's the services, that's included in the $2,892.
Right. So we had, so when I ran the numbers on both of those, it was like 7 million bucks. So 305 of the trailer boards, and then 1935?
No, that's just an option. And I want to clarify that. We got two quotes from CDW.
Right.
And we were looking at the mobile piece that they had, okay? And so after looking at that and talking with the staff, we found that from a security standpoint, that we really hadn't had any issues with vandalism with our active boards. So we decided that, and currently, right now, we have no mobile, no mobile solutions and trailers. So we decided that we would go through and put the short throw projector in the classroom, which is the $2,892. The $4,000 quote was just a quote for mobile services.
All right, because that's what I saw in my packet, was the higher, the higher-priced one for the 305 and the trailer?
That was an option, but again, after going back and talking, talking with staff, and looking at what issues that we've had from a security standpoint with.
No, I get it.
Boards, we decided.
This is still just a financial question.
Yep.
So we got, we don't have, we're not doing 1938, we're doing, we're switching the 305 trailers and adding those to the other ones? Is that correct?
We will do 1,939 classrooms, along with 305 trailers, at a cost of $2,892.
Cool.
Thank you. If we have no additional discussion, is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda?
No, I just did the math. So we got 2,244 whiteboards, which is 305, 1939, times 2982, $6,691,608.
Correct. And let me explain that to you. Typically, I've, we've come to the board with three SPOSS items that have asked for the entire amount. And as we've gone through, we've completed one and have come under, and are working on two, on the second one, which I believe was a $19 million item, that we're drastically under. We've achieved savings in all of them. Although we asked, we still have a firm with URS that we're responsible for and that we work with, so we completely stay up under that cost. I know it's cheaper, but at the same time, if we need to spend an extra $100 or $200 because of, you know, a particular item of not estimating rooms correctly, I would hate to come back to the board for that. These numbers on rooms are approximate numbers. We could get to a classroom, or get to a trailer, and see that we have, you know, eight more trailers that we have to do, or nine more classrooms that we have to do. Those are things that we have to look at. They're approximate numbers. We think we got it right, but we're not, we're not perfect.
So you're asking for discretionary funds?
I'm asking, I'm asking for you to approve the entire 9 million that the tax base approves.
Sure.
And allow us, right now, we feel we're going to be drastically under, based off of the numbers, and so we're going to keep an eye on it. We know we won't spend the 9 million.
I get that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the clarity. So if our IT department's asking for $9 million to purchase $6.7 million, and we need a, am I correct, in a $2.3 million cushion for unforeseen costs?
Two point.
Two point, 2.2?
One.
Yeah, 2.3. So I'm just trying to, in my head, that's a, that's a big unforeseen cost.
I wouldn't say it was unforeseen cost. I'm just asking for the entire amount. I've shown, over the last two projects, and my staff has shown, that we've come up, come up under the actual price. I'm actually.
No, I get it, and I appreciate you being under the actual, yeah. I'm just saying, from me, I'm, yeah, I'm good. Give me similar to our, you know, diagnos, you know, half million for our IEPs, right? We just had, so anyway, Superintendent, go ahead.
No, gentlemen, can I let, this is Mr. William Clars, he's the lead project manager.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir. One of the things that also we have to take in consideration is the mobile unit that you talked about, there are places, classrooms, where we will not be able to put a regular mounted board, whether they have glass, or the wall, or what have you. So you're going to get a fluctuation, first of all, in the actual number of mobile units that would really be required, that definitely will be some. Until we actually go out and do site surveys of each individual room, we won't know. As far as, so that's a quantity there. Additionally, there are special cases where, particularly like in labs and things like that, the school are requesting additional cable. While our standard board would be right in front of the classroom, we use the standard figure, there are going to be places where we're going to have to do additional cable. Taking, you know, taking in consideration those things, there's going to be, there can be a big fluctuation. For example, if each mobile, each school requires additional mobile board, or two, or what have you, it really going, you're really playing around with your fluctuation until we actually do get a site survey from the school. So those are a couple of reasons automatically where we would have to do that.
I guess, and I hear what Mr. McMahon's saying now. I mean, I think that the difficulty is that, I understand some buffer, I think what he's pointing out is it's a 39% buffer at this point. So that's 2.5 million over the cost, which seems like it would be more than what you're describing in terms of the potential variances. I mean, that would, that would have to be a pretty substantial variance. So why wouldn't we, you know, make the request something closer? And then if there were really substantial variances, as described in a 39% overrun, then we could come and consider it again.
I think it's 28, but that's still. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Thurman?
And it's all about perspective. And now share with the board and the viewing audience, the amount of dollars saved on your first two projects. Let's go back, because it almost appears as if they're not being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, when in fact, on the two previous projects, they've been just the opposite. And I think that would help the board kind of create a little bit more confidence in what they're doing. You mentioned it, but you didn't detail it.
Correct. Currently, on our two projects, we've, we've come under through, I think, with my staff, amazing negotiations on projects. We've saved $7 million on projects to date.
How much on the first project?
On the first project, which was $19 million, we saved $5 million on the $19 million project.
And obviously, you saved $2 million on the second project.
Correct.
And, and the project amounts were actually project amounts approved by the voters, which hypothetically could have been spent or used, but because of your due diligence and that of the staff, you've actually saved the school district $7 million to date. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is the third project?
Yes, sir.
And the board, I just want you, and what I want to do is thank you for your stewardship, right? Now, the board is really questioning whether or not you will maintain that type of stewardship, if I do share responsibility, on the third project. And, and as we get to the third project, I just don't want us to lose sight of the good work they've done on the first two.
Thank you.
Right? Because sometimes, if you don't, if you ignore what's already been done, then there are many people in the public, rightfully so, that will get a very, very negative impression of something, that based on the evidence, they've done an outstanding job to this point. And however we decide to go forward on the third project, it just behooves all of us to thank them for the work they've already done on the first two, in saving $7 million.
Mr. Mayfield?
Yeah, I understand what Mr. Brantley is saying, and I certainly understand the point that Mr. McMahon has raised. I think the real challenge, and I don't want to get on the soapbox here, I think the real challenge is the process. Because we have to be responsible to taxpayers for accounting for how we spend the dollars, we don't, two things clearly, I think, that as a board, we need to, perhaps at a retreat, come to terms with, you know, is how do we hold the process accountable? An example here is that on the back end, because we know we've allocated by virtue of what we've asked the taxpayers to support in the SPOSS, with, on a project-based list, what we are legally allowed to spend on a project, based on that declaration, before we actually ask for that vote from the public. But what we don't have strategically as a board are mechanisms to actually hold the entire process accountable, so that when we do have an opportunity for savings, or when we do need to understand overruns. when we do need to understand overruns, that we have a process that basically, you know, clarifies that. So that's a long way of saying, the $9 million is legally available to be spent on this project, but we have a fiduciary responsibility to the system and to the public, to make sure that on the back end, that we follow the process.
And I agree, and I would just suggest to the board that you all obviously have a very good process in place, but because of your oversight, that directly resulted in the savings of $7 million. And I know it can be better, but I'm just complimenting you all for your, as Mr. McMahon said, the book ultimately starts with the board, not with the superintendent. So if Mr. Brantley and his staff save $7 million, that's due to your oversight.
I might argue that, but-
And I'm not anybody's campaign manager, but you know, just me looking at it, that's what I see, that you all, because of your oversight and your concern, that you all have made sure that this man has done his job, and as a result of that, he saved $7 million. And I would expect that you all want him to continue to save money whenever, is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Orson.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is any way detracts from your, your success on these previous projects. I think the discomfort here for me is, when we know going in, that the numbers add up in the $7 million range, it, I don't think it's prudent for us to approve an amount substantially in excess of that, you know, because at this point, your best professional estimation, based on what you've told us here, is that this comes out to about 6.8, 6.9, or something like that. And while the 9 million is legally available, as we know, to the extent we save those monies, we are able to redeploy them under the SPOSS law, if we have excess funds at the end of it. So I think it's great, if you're able to get us in at seven on something nine, just at my own comfort level, I'm comfortable authorizing seven, and if you come in and say at the end of the day, it ends up being six, we are going to be even happier, not to give you an impossible challenge, but, but that's the context in which, you know, my comfort is. I'm not comfortable at nine, when you come to us with a projection that it's at 6.8, and it is, it is just about what the numbers tell us, and nothing more.
Dr., I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent, and then Dr. Marley.
We don't have any problem with that. It's all, but the only thing, my concern is that everything remains in the proper context. And in order to have the proper context, you have to look at all of the facts. And I just wanted to make sure that the reputation of this particular department would not be smirched by suggestions that they have had cost overruns, or hadn't been good stewards of the dollars, when actually it's been just the opposite. Now, now, my only concern is that if we lower it, and if there are some additional costs, then you put yourself having to come, you've had a cost overrun, and that's played out in a very, very negative posture, when in fact, we almost set up a scenario where they failed. So that's the other side of the concern. Not tired, but there are some journalists, and not Andrew either, who will always look at the most negative light, in terms of how it's articulated. That's my concern. Much better to come in under budget than to have to be over and then come back and ask for more money.
Dr. Marley.
Yeah, I just want to get some clarification, because I see, on one hand, it seems as if, you know, John seems to be concerned about the fact that they're asking for more than what you're actually saying that might be needed, and then seeing from Thad is saying, and that it shouldn't cost that much. I, I think that, again, as a board, if we're going to be jack of all trades and master of none, and not trusting the people that are actually out here doing this, because I don't, I'm not into technology, but I do know that technology costs, is I'd rather go in and have it and not need it, than to need it and not have it. So can we come to a consensus as to what amount? And I agree with the Superintendent, is that most certainly we don't want to overrun, because if they go in and it's seven, or eight, or nine, and they've already stated that there are going to be some other lines that need to be done, you have the portables that are out there, so you cannot estimate, and we don't want to guestimate, and you start guestimating on people's money, that brings up another problem. So what does this say about us as a board, that we're not being prepared and being prudent in what's needed and what could be, and saying, we want, I would rather know that we came up with an amount, and they saved two or three million, as they've done before with the seven, nineteen, how much ever has been saved, than to know that we went in and they come back to us and saying, you know what, we were under budgeted, and we needed three more million, and then we're going to have another problem. So I think that we need to come to consensus as to, what are we going to allow, and not being, again, so nitpicky with every little thing that, you can't do this, you can't do that. When are we going to trust the people who are actually the experts in these fields to be able to do what needs to be done? And I guess that's my concern. And when we begin to look at what they've done in the past, what we're trying to change, what has been done, or what hasn't been done in the past, but every time we seem to get there, then there's another question as to whether we can really trust them to be able to do it. I don't want to be the technologist, I don't want to be a project manager. If that's what I wanted to do, I wouldn't be sitting here on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
Erwin.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Brantley, I trust you.
Blame you.
I just have a couple of basic questions. Can you explain the site survey?
Technology's not working, okay, there it is. I actually let my, the person I trust, who does the site survey, explain.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, this is-
I actually wanted to talk to him, I'm joking.
This is Mr. William Clowers, he's actually a project manager for-
What was his last name again?
William Clowers.
Clowers.
And he's a project manager, lead project manager, for a lot of our SPOSS initiatives, particularly this one.
Well, it's a good thing to be trusted. Also, I've installed about roughly 90% of the boards. As a matter of fact, I started off the first one here, and I've worked with the, from the manufacturer to our subcontractors, as far as installation, so I've seen maybe one or two boards. But in other words, what we, what we do is, we coordinate with the vendor, they have to go out and look at every classroom, and because we have some classrooms where there are not permanent walls, and you can't really put a board up on there because of the weight constraints. But they go in, they walk into each classroom, identify that classroom, say, okay, we got power here, we got data for our computer here, we look at this room, yes, we can mount a board there. Now, they're going to go into some schools, and the rooms are sort of cornered, or that, you know, the teachers are using, the principals are using as much space as they possibly can, it may almost look like it's a cubby hole. But you can get a board, a mobile board, in that cubby hole, and they can go forward with construction. Or you may have a place where they're actually using the gym, where you can roll a board in, and they can actually do instruction. Also, we have special cases like what we call labs, and we would actually have cabling that has to go, not only from just in the front of the classroom, which would come with the standard board, they actually have to do cabling all the way back to the end of the classrooms. And right now, these, the number of these actual classrooms, we really don't have a handle on, that those would go to the 4,000 versus the 2,000. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is once we actually start rolling these things out, we want to be able to try to get them installed as expediently as possible, and not have to come back and say, we thought we only needed 400 mobiles, now we need 1,000 mobiles. You know, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, but that, that's the essence of a site survey. We look at every room, and the room that can get a board, that can be used for instruction, that's what we do, to install them.
So you're telling us that this is not an exact science?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Campbell.
Erwin.
I'm sorry, Dr. Erwin, you still?
Yeah, I got a couple more questions, and I, I guess I'm kind of getting confused about the mobile and non-mobile board. I thought we weren't buying any mobile boards.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying, it, there are places-
That are going to require mobile-
That will require mobiles, but like I say, some of the rooms, some of our classrooms are a lot older, and they just stuck up walls and things like that, and they're not permanent walls. And if you mount one of these heavy boards on there, we run a risk, first of all, we wouldn't do it, but the board could fall.
So it's not just cable costs, it's also construction costs too, in case you have to, I guess, sturdy up a wall, or?
Well, we don't, we don't actually sturdy up the wall, but we identify whether that wall is strong enough, or any wall that we're trying to use in that room.
So what if none of the walls are strong enough?
So we, we roll in wheels, we roll in a mobile unit to say, okay, you can have instruction now. That, that's the difference between the mobile versus the short throw mounted solution against the wall.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Superintendent Thurman and Mr. Brantley, great discussion about this. I guess it's the estimate of cost to be put in. I'm going to kind of err on the side of caution with some of these other people on the panel. It concerns me, I think the job has been well done, when you look at some of the prior projects, that we can do an estimate and come in under that estimate, but in this particular instance, when we have a nine minute, a $9 million projected cost, and we say that it appears that the actual cost is 6.8, we do get to about a 33% reserve, roughly 33%, 33% reserve, 33% reserve, excuse me. My concern is, are we actually doing the best estimate that we can do on that? And along with what Mr. McMahon said, does it make sense in this case to lower that estimate, or to lower that request to a small amount, and then if we get to a point that you need to come back and say, well, it was, we asked for 7.5, it actually came back 7.8, then that makes sense to us, makes sense to me, but if we ask for 9 million on a 6.8 million dollar cost, that really does sound like we got a 33% reserve, and we got some variables that have been well addressed and well discussed, but that's, that's a significant amount of reserve that we're setting aside.
Mr. Thurman.
I don't, we don't have any problem, how was, and this is my question, because I was not here, how was the original estimate developed, when it went into the East SPOSS? Because that was based on something, it wasn't just a number of people pulled out there, there were some people, or it could have been, but there were individuals who believed, I'm not going there today, I'm not going there. Apparently, there were some persons, or persons who sit in, sat in my seat and these seats, who believed that the cost was 9 million. Is that not right, or am I wrong? I don't know. How was that original estimate developed?
Well, and I, I can add this, I wasn't here either, but what I can say-
Who was here then?
Thad and I were on this.
Well, I think I do have a- Victor has many fathers, but failure's an orphan, right? So the point is, if you're a failure, no one will own you. But help me, help me, how do you, how do we develop the original estimate? Because somebody's either over or under.
Well, this is what I think happened. There's two things. Number one, at the time, I truly do believe that the cost of the boards probably could have been higher, that, that's number one. The second piece is, over the course of that time, you had a lot of PTAs, and a lot of different school, different partnerships with schools and businesses, or whoever, parents who have actually bought boards for their school. And so we've seen that happen over time, including Title I purchases, over, over that course of time, so it's decreased the board from that time, that's, that's my-
Yeah, and another aspect, the, the boards that we were purchasing, were close to about $4,300 a board, versus-
Oh, back then.
I mean, I mean, up to the, I mean, up to the, yes.
Finally, we find somebody. No, that's a good thing. So you helped to develop the original estimate?
No, I went through the RFP process, but no, I wasn't involved with the, I wasn't actually involved with the estimate.
It must be somewhere.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, somebody, somebody was here. Anybody remember?
It's an estimate.
It's, it's-
Mr.-
We're going to say the same thing, I think, which is, it's like any of these projects on the East SPOSS, you know, we estimated the elementary schools would cost 22 million, by the time we actually authorized them, we came at a different number, because this vote was two and a half years ago, I don't know, it's some time ago, and some of the-
Well, the estimate was two years before that, so, I mean, in terms of-
Yeah, and so, I, I think that it's, it's that process, and that's why the process is imperfect, to, when you get to the actual request, and I, and I would like to just suggest, and I heard you sort of suggest that number, would allow a 10% kind of cushion of 7.5 million dollars, that we authorize 7.5 million now.
I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that?
Yes, I, I, I'm really, I really just want to get the kids and the boards in the-
But that gives you, that gives you a 20% flip on going to mobiles, my rough estimate, it gives you the room, if you had to go 20% mobile, based on the difference in cost, it would give you the ability to do it.
Thank you, Marshall, because that's what I was saying before, if we're going to say what should not, why can't we say what could be? And so finally, we got there, that we at least give some suggestion of what that cushion could be. So I think that's where we've been headed, but again, that we go round and around and around in this circle, instead of coming up with that from the beginning, I think that's where we really need to be, what is the amount that we would actually give them as a cushion?
Mr. Mayfield.
Yeah, and, and having been involved in, in a number of SPOSS, and even an oversight committee at one point, I think what's important to think about as we make this decision, is this 9 million dollar allocation, not, and, and that we hold that piece of it accountable, because what ends up having to happen, is that when those surpluses, those surpluses are created, then a decision has to be made about new projects, if you will, that will consume those dollars, and if there are cost overruns that are more than the 2.5 million, as an example, in this particular case, we can come back and reauthorize, but I guess what I, what I, what I want to make sure that we don't do, this is really what I'm concerned about, is that what we don't do is end up believing that we've got 2.5 million worth of surplus, that somehow we can spend on another project, when legally, we haven't authorized ourselves to do that. We can, right, so.
So I have a comment, and then I think I've got a concrete proposal. So just so we have the math right, and someone would disagree with me if I have the numbers wrong, it's 6.5 million if all of them are these wall boards, which is $2,892 a piece. It's $7 million if it's 1939 of the cheaper wall boards, and 305 of the more expensive wall boards. It's actually 7 million if you go with mobile technology for all the trailers, as I read it. Given that, if we go with the current proposal, the 7.5 is a 15% buffer, which I feel like would probably give us more than enough room for the types of overruns you see, noting that they've already saved 1.5 million over the original SPOSS. This gives us two opportunities to save, Michael, the first of the 1.5, and then the second of whatever we come in below this one, so.
So, Mr. Campbell, so if Mr. Brantley comes in at the 6.5, we will get full credit on the nine?
Absolutely.
Right? So that would represent a savings of 2.5, is that right?
Correct.
Oh, well, no problem.
The proposal is-
Can I just say one more thing? And I, I think it's important too, to recognize, and I, Mr. Coleman, respect what you're saying, but instead of looking at cheaper, looking at quality, that whatever we do, that we get the best in quality, so we're not coming back because it's cheap, and it falls off the wall, it doesn't stand, you can't roll it, you can't do anything with it, it doesn't last, we want longevity, we want quality, and not looking at something because of the fact that it's cheap. We want to make sure that it stands the test of time, so they're not coming back for another six, seven, eight, nine million dollars later. So I think that we want to take that into consideration also, when we're looking at, at least I would like to make sure the best buck for the, the best quality of merchandise for the money that we're going to spend.
And I would like to make one final comment about Mr. Campbell, and that is about the process, but I need you. Is that, is that okay?
But, Mr. McMahon, and then-
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, Fin.
Well, well, yeah, and I, I think, I think the process that he described particularly is relates to site surveys, in many other markets where these types of processes take place, that site survey is actually done prior to an RFP going out on the part of the internal organization, or the vendors who bid on it are responsible for that site survey, and their bid is responsible for meeting any of the contingencies that he, right, that he describes. So, so I think that the, there are some opportunities for improvement in this entire process, that will get the numbers closer to what they need to be, and to hold the vendors who are responsible for bidding on this accountable to those particular numbers. So the process is a little bit backwards, I think, for us, and we have an- So the process is a little bit backwards, I think, for us, and we have an opportunity to improve on that.
Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Brantley, for excellent job, and Mr. Clowers, I greatly appreciate y'all's information and detail. Can I, now that we're about to accept this amendment and put it on the consent agenda for this evening, can you tell me a little bit, since this is almost a 25% of our entire classrooms' timeline and expected completion of the project?
I'll turn that over to the project manager, Mr. Clowers.
Thank you, sir. One of the issues, as we discuss timeline, is that these boards cannot be done during the regular hours, primarily because you're actually drilling the sound, the noise, distraction for the classrooms and what have you. So this work will have to be done primarily after school starting maybe two or three o'clock until, you know, maybe 10 or 9:00, depending on the school that you're, secondary school that you're in, you know, they have different times that they start. So the other factor is the vendor themselves. And when I say the vendor themselves, is that it's like going from zero to, okay, I want you to have so many people immediately to actually start up. But to cut through all the, you know, I guess, all the timeframes, it could potentially take us to the end of, close to the summer, to actually complete these number boards. Because of the constraints...
I appreciate that. Do you feel comfortable that this project will be completed by, like you said, end of the summer, beginning of 2015 school year?
Oh, definitely.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Okay, will someone read the final action requested item? Mr. Brantley, you've heard everyone, why don't we ask you to include the 10 or 15, whatever percentage you think will be more advantageous to you, and reread the requested action as you think it should be?
Yes, sir. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve CDWG to provide interactive board solution services, optional components, and accessories at a cost not to exceed 7.5 million dollars. The purchase is being made via the Georgia State Contract Number 99999 SPD, SPD 0000048 dash 0018.
Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here, none. Thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Brantley, Mr. Clowers.
Thank you, Mr. Brantley. Security for Records Center?
This number is right on, so...
We trust you, Mr. Brantley.
The second item is the security for the Records Center, and in your package, you'll find the top two most competitive proposals, there were three solicited. Last month, you approved the records retention schedule, and the final phase will be to install the security system to protect those records. The Records Center will house administrative records, but are not limited to the following: human resources payroll, Office of Legal Affairs, as well as Title I. The security system is imperative to provide safety and safekeeping of the public and district personnel researching and obtaining records for use. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the 24-axis 360 cameras and licenses for security purposes at the Records Center at a cost not to exceed 84,665.16.
Is there any discussion? Here, none. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here, here, seeing, and here, none? This item will be on the consent agenda? Professional Services Career Pathways Program Review? Mr. Thurman?
I pass. This looks dangerous, the video. I'll call on Mrs. Ramona Tyson, who will present it.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman. Dr. Johnson, members of the board. Mr. Thurman has asked that I present this item to you, and several things, just some quick things to walk through before I actually get to the recommendation. Ms. Francois is passing out a document I need you to add to your packet. I just discovered that you have the gifted proposal, and it'll make sense as I walk through the information in just a second. First of all, the board is being asked to approve to hire Beanstalk Incorporated to assist the district in doing an evaluation of the Career Pathways Program that we currently are implementing in the school district for grades six through 12. The reason this is being brought before the board, as you can see, the expenditure is 97,407, which is below the $100,000 threshold, which is required for board approval. Purchasing policy DJE requires that once you reach above 99,999.99, that the expenditure be brought before the board. Because Beanstalk has been used previously in this budget calendar year, this expenditure will now take us over that 99,000 mark, so therefore, this is being brought to the board. In addition to being in compliance with Board Policy DJE, we also conducted two required written quotes, and it falls up under Professional Services, which is allowed under DJE for education consultants. With that being said, the board is being, it is requested that the Board of Education approve the award of the Professional Services Career Pathways Program Review to Beanstalk Innovation, in the amount not to exceed 97,407. Beanstalk will assist the school district in reviewing the current career pathway program. As the board will recall, the district is in the process of reviewing the ability to open a career academy. And Mr. Thurman's vision is, before we open that academy, we need to take a very strong look at our current career pathways program, to ensure that from a curriculum standpoint, from a policy standpoint, procedures, and goals, that we are implementing and basing that on national research and best practices. And so, two consultants through Beanstalk Innovation will be working with the district over the next 90 days, and while they're here, they will be looking again at all the curriculum documents, as well as all of our programs' expectations and processes, not only from a teacher's standpoint, but from a parent, student, and administrative implementation level. They will also take a look at how we evaluate our programs, and how best we need to revamp, restore, and revise our career pathway programs, particularly as we look at a career academy going forward. Just so you'll know, the two consultants, one you're familiar with, at least some, I'm hoping, most, some of the board members will remember, Dr. Cynthia Lowe, who was the former superintendent for Fulton County School District, and the associate superintendent prior to that in Gwinnett County Public Schools, will be the principal consultant on the project. And then a Dr. William Yonkin from Florida International University, who is a specialist, expert specialist in the evaluation of programs, will also be working with the school district. So, again, it is requested that the Board of Ed approve the award of the Professional Services Career Pathways Program Review to Beanstalk Innovation, in a amount not to exceed 97,407.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyson. Is there any discussion?
I have a clarification question. This is my confusion about the materials. I know, it looks like we had a document confused in the original folder and the one we just got. So this is unrelated to any high Jever and gifted programs, this is separate and only pertaining to the Career Pathways Program. Is that correct?
Mr. Coleman, you are absolutely correct, sir.
Mr. Mayfield.
Yeah, and the other point that I wanted to thank you for, actually, is the difference in the document has to do with the language of the bullets of the project overview. The original one only asked for communication tools and processes, and this one is actually asking for the program processes, and then the effectiveness of communicating those processes with the various stakeholders that you've listed here.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayfield, correct.
Mr. Campbell.
Dr. Tyson, I had just a very simple question, I'm sorry. You mentioned two names, Dr. Cynthia Lowe, and the other person was...
Dr. William Yonkin, and then you'll look in the document that Ms. Francois just handed out on the second page.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may...
Mr. Thurman.
The vision, of course, and this goes back to our strategic planning process, the 90-day plan, we are working hard to position the CAP County School District to become a national leader among urban school districts in terms of career pathways, as well as the college and career academy. And we didn't wanna set the career academy on top of a foundation that was not solid. And in order for the career and college academy to work out pathways existing and proposed must be aligned and focused in the same direction. So I'm very excited about it, but we need an independent eye to look honestly and objectively at where we are and what steps we need to take to go forward.
No further, no further discussion. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Mr. Orson, 2014 Legislative Agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had asked me to look at some ideas for Legislative Agenda based on what we had done previously, or the previous boards had done. And one of the things we did was to look at something that was more pared down and hopefully more obtainable. I think if you look at the history of Legislative Agendas, it's been broad, multiple topics on there, and often stated in the context of what we don't want the legislature to do, which has not necessarily been a successful strategy. So one of the things we tried to do was to draw from, from those previous iterations, and look at an agenda that was more simplified, not to say that there isn't room for discussion around any of these, and I understand that, but that was within sort of the wheelhouse of things that have been most topical. For example, the first thing being funding of quality basic education, and we know, as we know in every school system, that it has not been fully funded for some extended period of time, and that that has a direct impact, and puts us in alignment with other school systems in terms of the need for us to be able to fulfill our mission as educational The other items, and there's only five on this list, there's a typo in here, and which two things were reproduced on here, but about instructional expenditure control, and giving us flexibility, which has been the state mandate, the state mantra anyway, about increased in flexibility, I think ensuring that we have that flexibility is consistent where state policy has gone. And others relate to our ability to control our own budget. You know, we have unfortunately had to have, what is Dr. Ward Smith called, the workforce reduction days, not furlough days, but, you know, we are moving in a direction of restoring those, but systems have needed to have that flexibility, quite frankly, given the adverse economic conditions we've had. And hopefully, those days are behind us, and we're moving towards that, away from that. The other two items on here, one has been about the compulsory school attendance age. Students in Georgia now can leave school at 16. There's been ongoing debate about the impact that has on graduation rates, and about the longer time they stay in school, the more success we will have. We know that that's only one small issue, as the superintendent well knows with his bridge initiative about increasing our graduation rates, that that's not the magical elixir for solving the problem, but just one small factor. And then the last issue, and I know that Mr. Coleman has raised the issue, I wanna respect, his question about that has been about school vouchers and tax credit initiatives. And I included this, and this is obviously ultimately a Legislative Agenda for the entire board, because it is a consistent position of school boards that I think differs from where we stand on things like charter schools. I mean, charter schools are public schools. The tax vouchers and, school vouchers and tax credits are in debate, I understand the debate, about whether money moves from the public school system into non-public schools. And the difference in the tasks of public schools is they basically, even when they're charters to a certain extent, have to take all comers, and private schools do not. And so those, my goal here to provide for discussion was to have a much more pared down Legislative Agenda, so that it didn't look like we were trying to address 20 things, and particularly not address them in the context of just asking legislature not to do something, because if you look at our success rate, it is virtually zero in terms of having done that in the past.
Discussion, Mr. Mayfield?
Yeah, I'm just wondering how well-aligned our priorities are with other districts in the region, given the rationale or presumption that the numbers make the difference in terms of legislative support.
And this was drawn up, and I defer to the chairman, because he attended a meeting with other particularly large school systems, which was sort of the impetus to try to get this draft done. I'd love to hear back, I think we'd all love to hear, because I think that is important. Our success, if we're sort of off the grid from everybody else, you know...
The most consistent item on here would be the adequate funding of quality education, the QBE. That's the most consistent one, and the first one discussed in a meeting that was held among all the superintendents in the metro area and board chairs. Funding was the number one problem, Mr. Ramsey. And certainly, one item relative to that was the equal amount of money that the CAP County pours into that pool of money. And particularly, the formula used by the state of Georgia indicating, one, Gwinnett County receives around 60 million dollars out of the pool. And we put in roughly 105 million dollars into the pool, but received nothing back. And as relates to that, the formula indicates that Gwinnett County is a poorer school system than the CAP, and that's according to the formula. That was the most pressing item. The other items related to furlough days and lessening or eliminating furlough days from the formula. The other school improvement items and school initiatives, they fluctuated, but those were the pressing ones.
And the reason, if I could just respond, I guess, is that I would certainly be hopeful that our Legislative Agenda has efficacy, or actually can get traction. And so in those areas where we have any assessment of the likelihood of success or failure, that we can better manage our lobbying dollars, if you will, to sort of get at those things that are important to us, that we have a reasonable chance of success, and that while these other items may be important to us, if we cannot make a determination, especially when we're collaborating with others in the metropolitan area, that we can sort of galvanize a critical mass, that maybe we would sort of make those lower on the priority in terms of expending resources.
Can I address, because that was one of the reasons, so, I don't know that the chairman and I diverge, but one of the things that is not on this list is about the 5 mil contribution that you make in the equalization formula. And partially, as I knew it was going to the meeting with other systems, I didn't think a good starting point was to put ourselves at odds with Gwinnett. Even though we may have a disagreement, that wasn't gonna be a way to build consensus, quite frankly. And I don't think it's, simply, it's not Gwinnett's fault, they've been smart, they take advantage of it, but they didn't write the formula, the state legislature wrote it, and I think the bigger issue is, how do you write a formula that is consistent and that, more importantly, is actually funded? I mean, you know, I had, as some of you know, I had the opportunity to work with Joe Martin, who had actually written this law, and what he would always say, and it is probably more complex, because that's Joe's nature, but it's a formula at the end of the day. And the real issue is, it's never been fully funded. And if... And if you fully funded it, you would see how the money flows. Putting even the arguments about the five mil share, because that actually relates to your local tax digest and the fact that they're a suburban county, you know, and because they, you know, they're big and wealth is not always equivalent with size, right? So we have some small counties that are wealthy, we have some large counties that are, you know, and so it's, I know, and from our public's perspective, it's a seductive argument to say, you know, we're sending money to Gwinnett County. We're not actually sending money to Gwinnett County, we're putting it into a pool and Gwinnett gets the benefit of getting the pool money out of that pool, that five mil share that allows you then to buy into participation in QBE. And we don't. And so the larger argument, I think to your point, which isn't even encapsulated here, but it's really going to require some serious sitting down and thinking, is what should the formula be to fund schools from the state level? And that's a discussion that has started. The governor did appoint a commission. I don't know where it is in its timetable for reporting out. I think I would guess that one of the struggles I have is it sounds seductively easy to say, let's just get rid of QBE and do something else until you try to figure out what the something else is. Because built within QBE are some assumptions which may be dated, it's a formula, but about what should the state be supporting? So for example, it supports the payment of a principal at every school, right? Not necessarily at the salary we're paying them, but that's one of the assumptions. It supports the provision of a guidance counselor at a certain number that's a divisible, not actually necessarily at the school level, but a divisible number of four fifty or whatever. And so all those things may need updating, or maybe they need to be thrown out, but I don't know that we're in a position to talk about throwing them out and starting over until we have a much larger and more substantial conversation with our colleagues at other systems, which I think is really is a necessity. Because I think we're going to run into this problem that the legislative session is short and we're not either individually or collectively focused on the reforms that we think are obtainable and would get the kind of buy-in we need from those who hold the political power at the legislature.
That's a good point, Mr. Orson. And to that end, I think perhaps it would benefit the school system to really consider whether or not we should have lobbyists, and that's a relative term, but a lobbyist that we could really address the legislative concerns that we have and have that person to be involved in the process and someone who, with the experience of dealing with these kinds of issues, that would perhaps be helpful to us, I don't know. But it's something that we, as a board, should consider. Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Orson, when we talk about the compulsory school age attendance, sixteen to seventeen, is that state? And when we talk about going from sixteen to seventeen, is the state's legal age sixteen? So this would be across the state, not just in the district?
Right. Because I don't know that we can set standards on the state.
Okay.
The state establishes compulsory education.
Thanks.
Mr. Coleman?
Let's make a quick comment. I thank Mr. Orson for pulling this together, and I actually think this is very good, and I like the idea that it's more concise rather than longer, because I do think you can only have a few initiatives at a time. As Mr. Orson noted, I think I broadly agree with four of these. The fifth I have reservations about, which will probably lead me to not vote that this be on the consent agenda with school voucher and tax credit initiatives. And I have a concern about, ahead of the fact, or ahead of knowing the individual facts of certain cases, just stating that we're universally opposed to something like that, which could potentially be a tool for the development of educational opportunities, either amongst different communities, like students with special needs, et cetera, or in different geographic communities. So I just wanted to be able to state my reservation with a kind of universal statement that we're uncomfortable with those types of initiatives, which in my opinion can actually be a useful tool, though not all the time, that states or that local communities can use.
No further discussion. Thank you, Mr. Orson, for your hard work, and we appreciate it. Is there any?
Question. I'm sorry. Just a point of clarity for the school improvement initiatives. Is there afterthought for this last statement? For compulsory school attendance age, it kind of just goes off?
Yeah, I think something about that was on the second.
Okay, okay, sorry.
He said the requirements of the government general assembly raised the compulsory age, it should say the seventeen.
Okay, all right, okay, I'm sorry.
I think in the editing room, we were getting Dr. Johnson ready for the meeting.
Okay.
It dropped off.
You know, I do want to make just one other comment, which is, I think, and I think I understand Mr. Coleman's reservation, so I think we would have to have, we'll have to have a discussion this evening. I would be further in favor of even refining this even more. I mean, I, you know, the legislative agenda sounds great. We don't have a lobbyist, first of all, so it's not like we're going to spend a down meeting on doors. And I think the more substantial, oh wait, we have somebody who can be a lobbyist. He will just have to take a leave of absence for, so, but I think we need a more, I understood the context of getting ready for the meeting, but I think we need a more substantial conversation about the priorities, we think. And I would, quite frankly, having had this discussion, be just as comfortable tabling it and arranging for us at our next work session, or work session, to really have that substantive conversation that we haven't had, because I think we really need to have it. And it's also an opportunity for us to establish some leadership in the metro area, because I think the other systems go around doing the same thing, talking and they meet for, you know, ninety minutes and then they go back off and there's not, and I think it's also a byproduct of what happens at the state organizations in there. And it really requires, like we are doing with our strategic plan, requires some real thinking that aligns ourselves with the needs of our system, as well as the political realities of where we are, to get something that's obtainable, rather than going through the exercise of saying, here's a document, hey, we've done it, we check it off the list.
Mr. Thurman?
To Mr. Orson's point and others, there is a real opportunity for one of them this year, and that is increased funding in QBE. And if we do nothing else, I would suggest that we encourage our governor, legislators and others, Mr. Ramsey, to support that, to reinforce.
Can we all say Mr. Ramsey's name at least once?
Yeah, we do. No pressure, Mr. Ramsey. But to support, and what I understand will be an effort by the governor to increase QBE funding by two to three percent. And that would be significant. We get, what, about three hundred million or so from the state allocation? Yeah, so we're looking at maybe six million dollars for us, six to nine. So one thing we can do, and I think you're right, I always used to call it when I was there, you had to get in the jet stream, because very few people independently move anything through the general assembly. The jet stream is, in election year, politicians like to do good things for education during election years. There's more money this year and there's a real opportunity for increased funding in QBE. So if the board might want to do anything, a letter or a statement to our delegation, to the governor and others supporting that effort, and I think you got a real opportunity to have a positive outcome.
Okay, here in?
I have one comment.
Yes, Dr. Irwin, I'm sorry.
And this is probably more so to our re-elected chairman. With these in-depth discussions, can we start to look at some dates for our retreat so we can have these discussions?
Sure. Margaret, would you work on that for us, please, ma'am? Now, Mr. Orson, am I hearing you correctly? And I heard what Mr. Thurman was saying, and if I had to glean from both of the conversations, I would say that right now, the board could take from this list the adequate funding comments made by Mr. Thurman, asking the governor to increase the QBE amount. And we actually make that a part of our consent agenda and make it official that we are making that recommendation. And then we table all the others to, for further discussion next week, next month.
Or whenever the retreat. The thing that's time we know is the funding, and the thing we all agree on is the funding, and the thing that is the fair and I think also the politically opportune time is the funding. So I think, I'm fine with that.
And I guess my only question to that, or hopefully we can add, but tell me if it's appropriate or not, if I could, if you could, whether or not we need to have an effort, an effort that we can see, defined effort, to actually collaborate with other stakeholders in the metro area, to actually put some momentum, I guess, to be proactive in this regard?
In essence, that has been done. And there is a letter by the Georgia School Boards Association, they have written the governor a letter, and I will ask Margaret if she would share that, a copy of that letter at?
Just make copies.
Just make copies of the letter and distribute it to all board members, as well as comments from a standpoint, we can receive copies of each list of agendas, agenda items from, I mean, legislative concerns from each of the metropolitan school systems. So Margaret, if you would get those two lists of items and distribute to the board sometime today, it would be appreciated. So if I'm hearing and repeating what I've just stated, we will, we will, we will place on the consent agenda the adequate funding recommendation made, and we will table the other parts to be discussed at our retreat. Okay. All in favor?
You don't want to vote, you don't want to vote.
All right, I just want, okay.
General consensus.
All right, so that will, will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Orson. Authorization for superintendent to explore use of the Clifton Elementary School site?
I'd like to call on Mr. Wilkins to make the presentation. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is first read the requested action and then come back with the justification rationale. The requested action is that it is requested that the board authorize the superintendent and the administration to explore the use of Clifton Park Elementary School site for the future Gresham Park Elementary School by completing the following. One, seek site approval from the Georgia Department of Education. Two, conduct required public notification meetings. And three, prepare a full cost estimate review for the additional design, engineering and construction costs. The project will be brought back to the board for separate approval. If I can remind the board that we have been in discussions with the Clifton and Meadowview communities for the past several months and really getting to understand, know, and particularly listen to the community's suggestions, ideas and concerns with respect to this new school. As we went through those discussions, we believe, we now believe that those concerns have a great deal of merit. We have explored several of their concerns to include the legal issues that are involved, the location itself, as I've already mentioned, the size of the school, what might happen with the buildings that would not be in use, but most importantly, what is the purpose of the school? And I say that in distinction from the building, right? What does the school do versus what is the building supposed to do? So as we went through those discussions, we believe that relocating Gresham Park to Clifton has merit and deserves further study. And as I mentioned, those studies will include, again, reviewing what needs to be done with the Department of Education, what needs to be done to reset the dialogue in a more formal, legalized way, meaning we are changing the discussion from what was decided in the past to a new discussion as we go forward. That is what the public hearings are about. And then, of course, any additional costs that are a result of this new move. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop and take any questions.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Irwin?
Yes, I don't have any questions. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I've also been involved in these community meetings. We had one on October fifteenth and one on December seventeenth. And first of all, I want to commend the staff for going to the first community meeting, because there was a great passion shown by the community, to say the least, and Mr. Mayfield was also there. And the staff has performed excellently at the first and at the second meeting. The community is very engaged with this process, very excited, and they look forward to the board's decision on this matter. I think this is a great opportunity for us to rebuild our relationship with the community, to show that we're listening, we believe in their opinion, and we trust them, and we want them to trust us. So I hope that my fellow board members will support this. Thank you.
Mr. Orson?
I also want to start out by commending the staff, because I think, you know, these projects, and it goes back to the earlier discussion, that when these SPOS projects come online and they're voted on, they're years before they may actually be implemented. And so I think it's really critical, and this is great, that we are sensitive to what these communities are saying and that we are adapting as the facts on the ground change. I think that's a really important part for us to be successful in this. And I just want to, I heard your reference to legal, we know that there are certain limitations when you change SPOS projects based on there's actually a relevant Supreme Court case. To make sure that we do whatever we have to do within the legal realm to make sure that we're in compliance with that. For example, the rules on if you abandon a project, you can only abandon them under certain very limited circumstances. And so I just want to encourage you to be working closely with our legal counsel to make sure that if we ultimately make a change, that we do so in a way that doesn't expose us to liability. But the larger issue is really, I think it is great that we are really heeding what communities are saying and adapting to changing circumstances. So thank you.
I think we have a lot of precedent cases previously, I think, if you do your research. Is there any further discussion? Here and now, is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda? Here and now, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Initial request amendment to the bylaws and policies, board policy, GCB, classified personnel positions. Mr. Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board and superintendent. This is item G2. On November fourth, two thousand thirteen, the DeKalb Board of Education celebrated non-certified professionals on Education Support Professionals Day. Currently, board of education policy classifies such employees as auxiliary or classified employees. This agenda item requests that the Board of Education reclassify all such personnel as education support professionals.
Discussion? No action? This is just for read, first read only?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment, Chairman.
Comment, Mr.?
And, Mr. Thurman, I think you know this as well as I do, is the superintendent in Gwinnett has two employee classifications, teachers and those who support teachers. So this looks to me like it's aligned in a similar manner. So I'd like to thank you for bringing us in alignment with other great school districts locally. So, yeah, I'm a hundred percent in support of this and that motto.
Thank you.
Sit on the table for thirty days.
Okay. All right, we'll sit on the table for thirty days. This next board, a policy, amendment to the bylaws and policy, board policy, DKA. Mr. Orson?
So this is, we've sat on the table for many more than thirty days, but I think we're finally at the time that we can approve this. This is the after-school program money. There were two typos that we were made aware of that I just wanted to clarify. One is in subsection one, the first line, the direct expenses of the program, it should be a capital P, and somewhere in here, oh, in number four on the second line, there's an extra or after the word more, and those are the only two. Otherwise, I think it has had the due period of time, I don't know if there's any other comments.
And I don't know, Byron, you may speak to this. Now, the audit is prepared, but the gentleman who produced the audit is not available. So have we shared, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, right, I've read the audit, I think the board would benefit greatly from seeing this audit. So our plan was to distribute the audit today and had a presentation, Mr. Orson, but of course, Mr. Big mother is here, and he's not here, but we have the audit. of course, Mr. Big Mother is here, and he's not here, but we have the audit available, and Ms. Margaret, you might want to pass it out. It's interesting, and it may influence the policy.
Okay.
When you read it, it's, it's...
Well, Mr. Orson, would you be amenable to tabling this item until the next meeting?
Well, why don't we read this and we can decide if for tonight, we have a business meeting tonight, so I...
Well, why don't we just...
Table it to the business meeting.
...this item until tonight?
Yeah. And then we can decide if that...
We'll make this a... Margaret? We'll make this an action item for tonight.
Talk some more?
Yes, yes. Rather than, okay.
Yeah, we made some...
Right, okay. At this time, okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session after we have a, well, moved by Mr. Coleman, second by Mr. Coleman, all in, is there any discussion? Here and now, all in favor, let me know by show of hands. It's unanimous. We'll take a fifteen-minute, okay? Thank you. We'll take a fifteen-minute break at five o'clock.
Thank you. We'll call you back. I'll call you back.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.